Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genatino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor Castro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, just.
He remains standing for multiple silent prayer reflection. Please, Mr. Quill. Mister Clerk, public announcements, if any.
Uh, no announcements this evening.
Very good, thank you. We have two proclamation. First one would be National Tennis Month proclamation.
Yes. Proclamation from the office of Mayor Michael D. Quill. On May twenty-first, eighteen eighty-one, the United States Tennis Association, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City to create rules and standards for the emergency, emergency, I'm sorry, emerging game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is the nonprofit national governing body for tennis in the United States and leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the US Open. And whereas the USTA is the largest tennis organization in the world with over seven hundred thousand members from every corner of the country. And whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the important health, social, and educational benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone, regardless of age, environment, condition, or ability, through the US, through its USTA adaptive grants. Whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than twenty-one point six million Americans played tennis in two thousand and twenty, an unprecedented twenty-two percent increase in participation over two thousand and nineteen, and the highest number of players since the PAC study began in two thousand and seven. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for citizens of all ages and ability, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthy. And whereas the USTA has declared the month of May as National Tennis Month to encourage players, organizations, facilities, retailers, tennis manufacturers, and more to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and spread the word about the sport and its benefits, and to help players and not players alike find courts and play opportunities in their communities. Now therefore be resolved that Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the members of City Council and citizens of Auburn, does hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-two, as National Tennis Month here in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. With us this evening, we have Clara Minow. Clara, if you're willing, come to the podium. Say a few words. Counselor Cuddy wants to say a few words. So we ran a little bit.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. General. Yeah. No, I'm super excited to promote National Tennis Month um, in the month of May and to promote our parks here in Auburn and to encourage um, the youth and adults to come out and play some tennis on Saturday. We're excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor.
Yes, thank you Clara for accepting that on behalf of Auburn Community Tennis. And as Clara mentioned, uh, this Saturday is the Auburn Tennis Festival at Clifford Park. It's, it starts at nine. It's open to everyone. Uh, nine is for the, the beginners. And uh, ten there'll be the intermediate players and at eleven there'll be the more advanced players. And there'll be uh, teachers. Clara will be there as one of the instructors. Um, I will be there as one of the students um, uh, later, later on. And it's, there's going to be a lot of events there. Uh, Perform For Purpose will be playing. There'll be um, obviously tennis lessons and clinics. There will be uh, um, base painting and uh, and um, some promotional materials from the USTA. So um, you know, this is a, a, and a proclamation that celebrates tennis. And um, later in this, later in this uh, meeting, there will also be, uh, the council will be voting to accept a grant from the US Tennis Association um, to provide some more programming. So this kickoff that's happening on Saturday is kicking off all the events that are going to be happening throughout the summer uh, that are tennis-related. So um, so Clara, thanks for being here and we look forward to a great, great summer of tennis activities. And thank you, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you. Our next proclamation for Motorcycle Safety Month, BATE?
Proclamation from the office of Mayor Michael D. Quill. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involved in motorcycling on roads of our country. And motorcyclists, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers. Whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related injuries and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. Whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of our country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas urging all citizens of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle and for riders and motorcyclists alike to give each other the mutual respect that they deserve. And now therefore, Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of Auburn, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and twenty-two, as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month here in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. With us, we have Dennis Pell, Mayor.
I, I do have something for you also, Mayor. Um, I have a very good friend of mine. He grew up here in Auburn. And I believe, uh, you might know him, John Coco. But anyway, his, his dad, Tony, was friends with your dad. And his, my friend's uh, son is a professional photographer and dedicated this book to actually his grandfather, Tony. Anyway, it has beautiful stories and uh, pictures of all the interviews around the United States. So if you'd like to have that, I, we'd be pleased. From John and uh, maybe share with the council. Thank you very much, too. If I could just say a few words. Uh, first of all, on behalf of Abate of Cuba County, Abate of New York State, and all motorcycle riders in Cuba County, I'd like to thank Mayor Quill, City of Auburn, uh, council for supporting and recognizing the month of May for motorcycle safety and awareness. We're extremely proud of this year especially because we're getting support from Cuba County Legislature. Actually, next week, they're doing a proclamation and uh, Cuba County Sheriff's Department. We've had public service announcements, social, social media, and other things also locally that have been very effective. American bikers aim towards education as a not-for-profit corporation. We're formed to promote and protect the interests of all New York State motorists, or motorcyclists. We are fathers, mothers, sons, daughters, grandparents, business owners, and veterans. We have monthly breakfasts to support our local businesses in Cuba County. Our monthly meetings are held at the VFW right here in Auburn. Uh, we have a foundation that's, the sole purpose is to be a monetary arm for things we do. That's our education programs, signs, uh, brochures, uh, things like that. BATE has seventeen chapters that are from all areas across the state. We're not a motorcycle club. Uh, we support many local charities. Last year, we raised six thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars for Cuba County Veterans Emergency Services Program. We work with SPCA, Hogs for Dogs, other, other charities also. Some we organize, some just as, uh, support groups for them. Motorcycle fatalities, as you, as you've read also, um, in personal injury accidents are on the rise. Fifty percent increase in many areas now is what they're finding. Motorcycle ownership will certainly increase as price of gas climbs, which it has been very much recently. Awareness is so important to staying alive. We're pleased that S sixty-two oh-two has passed the Senate and Assembly A seventy thirty-two has not even been put to a vote. These are proposed bills that will increase fines, possible incarceration for inattentive, negligent, distracted drivers, and mandatory training before a license is issued to, to new drivers. Uh, the annual cost is tremendous, affecting not just the motorcycle community, but pedestrians, children, adults on bicycles, disableds, uh, individuals in wheelchairs. That's all part of these bills I just mentioned. Um, so we are in support of these bills. And the next step would be, uh, to go to the signature of the governor. So we support it again. Credo Kate's law is a similar law we've tried to pass for some years. So we're excited. This proposal will be a step in the right direction. We urge you as, as council people, uh, the mayor's offices, any, any electeds to support the Senate bill, let them know about that. And the Assembly version, A seventy thirty-two, to please pass it. Uh, again, thank you for your proclamation, support. Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, and its, its promotion will certainly save lives. And most sincerely, from Abate of Cuba County, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You want that for those references?
I'm sorry?
Would you want, as far as the references on the Assembly?
Yeah, that's great. That'll help. Thank you. Let's move along to our public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less. And please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Got to get my timer set, so everybody gets a fair shake, so just give me a second. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. My name is David Scott, S O T T, sixty-three South Street, Auburn, one, three, zero, two, one. So I'm going to start today by speaking about the events in Buffalo on Saturday. I'm going to quote John F. Kennedy. "Today we are committed to a worldwide struggle to promote and protect the rights of all who wish to be free. And when Americans are sent to Vietnam, we do not ask for whites only. It ought to be possible, therefore." And I'm going to stop there. "It ought to be possible for African-Americans to enjoy the rights and liberties secured by the Constitution and not have to have civil deprivations simply because the color of their skin. And for anyone in this room who does not think that this could not happen in upstate New York or in the City of Auburn, you are sadly mistaken." Let me go back, though. Paragraph before John F. Kennedy, and I quote, "Today we are committed to a worldwide struggle," he said. Now, the beginning of his discussion on civil rights, he said, "I hope that every American, regardless of where he lives, will stop and examine his conscience about this and other related incidents. This nation was founded by men of many nations and backgrounds. It was founded on the principle that all men are created equal and that the rights of every man are diminished when the rights of one are threatened," end quote. So today, I'm here to voice opposition to the city's municipal budget for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. All it does is increase racial inequality. All it does is give money to people who already have money. All it does is takes our tax dollars and gives them upwards to those who already have the wealth and income to get things done in this city while keeping a permanent underclass. There is no Office of Minority Affairs, but surprisingly, there is security now planned for the front of this building. It's interesting how we can come up with dollars when we need to in this city. Okay, and then I'm going to tell you one more thing. I am personally offended by Friday morning. In this city, we had an all-white event for veterans out in front. And that is the truth. And you can look at the media if you need to. As a combat veteran, I am offended by what happened. So therefore, I'm about ready to do a teach-in on the front steps on Friday of Memorial Day weekend. And I will be boycotting anything with Memorial Day. There is no place for racism or discrimination against minority veterans in this city. If anyone has any problems with that, well, just understand that that's where I stand. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard, please? Either podium, wherever you're possible.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Reaster, and I'm the Economic Development Specialist for CEDA, which is the Cuba Economic Development Agency located at Two State Street in Auburn. CEDA is the economic development organization for all of Cuba County that works with businesses of any size to help them start up and grow. A large part of what we do is connect entrepreneurs and businesses to local, regional, state, and federal resources. My role as business retention, my role is business retention, expansion, and attraction, which means I work with our local businesses to help them stay here and grow as well as working to get new businesses to expand or relocate here. CEDA also has a specialist who works with entrepreneurs and microbusinesses. I came tonight to share some information about an SBA program available to our local businesses to help them grow a more profitable, efficient, and competitive business. Over the years, Cuba County has had a handful of businesses go through the program when it was known as the SBA's Emerging Leaders. They recently rebranded the program as THRIVE, which stands for Train, Hope, Rise, Innovate, Adventure, and Elevate. So THRIVE, Emerging Leaders Reimagined, is an intensive executive-level training program to accelerate the growth of high-potential small businesses. Developed by the US Small Business Administration, THRIVE helps business owners become more effective leaders, learn how to acquire financing, scale their revenue, and leverage networking with other entrepreneurs. Through the program, participants develop a three-year strategic growth plan that provides a roadmap for achieving their company's unique goals. The THRIVE program is open to small business owners and C-level executives that have annual revenues of at least two hundred fifty thousand a year and have been in business for at least three years and also have at least one employee other than themselves. The two thousand and twenty-two cohorts will run from July fifth through December sixteenth. Training includes thirty-three hours of core online learning and eleven in-person live sessions over six months. They anticipate one hundred total hours of combined learning, homework, and coaching or mentoring time. This program is free to participate in. The only costs are the participants' time and commitment to complete the curriculum. Those who are interested can apply to THRIVE at www.sba-thrive.com. Applications are due by the end of May, and they are being considered on a rolling basis, so please get your applications in ASAP. If anyone would like to discuss THRIVE or get more information, they can contact me at the CEDA office at three one five two five two three five zero zero. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I hope we get a couple of businesses to go through this free program.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Very well, we'll close the initial public to be heard. Yep, I, thank you. Uh, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing for the City of Auburn, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget. Is there anyone desiring to speak in regards to the budget? Very well, we'll move along. We will keep this open to most of the meetings, so. Approval of meeting minutes from April twenty-eighth of this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Genatino. Corrections, deletions, addition? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. Uh, the minutes from May fifth of this year. And a clique, yeah. Okay, so they'll be on that frequency. I knew he was going to do that to me. I just didn't know when or how, so. Mister Dugger, city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of, uh, quick updates and reminders. The city is accepting bids for the annual CD BG sidewalk program. Those bids are due back on May twenty-fourth. We're also accepting bids for general electrical work throughout city facilities. Those bids are due back on May twenty-sixth. Also accepting bids for general plumbing work throughout city-owned buildings and facilities. Again, with those bids being due back on May twenty-sixth. And finally, accepting bids for the water filtration plant improvement project. All of these, uh, projects and bid specifications, more details are available on the city webpage under the tab Bids and RFPs. Uh, the micro-surfacing project of the annual road program is, uh, continuing. It's been delayed several times this week because of the rain, but it is a project that continues to move forward. As I mentioned last week, staff was looking for some direction for council as far as moving forward with the distribution of ARPA funds and whether we wanted to do that through focused allocations or whether we wanted to go ahead, uh, as we had originally done and, uh, proceed with an application-type process. So I just, uh, wanted to revisit that again if we could and just get council's direction on that for staff so that we can move that project along.
In what form, I'm looking at council, I think we're all looking at, in what form would you like that? Open discussion or written, or what was your focus?
If I could just get some general direction here. We don't need a resolution or anything like that. We're just looking for a little guidance for, for staff so we can move that project.
Counselor Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mister Dugger, as I mentioned last week when you brought this up, I, I think this was the result of my email. And I explained the context of my email and, and some frustration that I was feeling. Um, honestly, some, I guess, um, hopelessness and, and after having the meeting that I had. Um, I don't want to circumvent the process, though. I, I think that it's important that, you know, this money be, um, distributed equitably and equally. So I'm fine with the process that was proposed to us as a council, from staff. Um, it helps me and reassures me knowing that there is a foreseeable timeframe now. And I think that that will also, um, help the specific organization that I was referring to.
All set, counsel?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So we're okay with moving ahead with what we had planned, which is an application process similar, very similar to the small business program that is underway currently. And as I mentioned last week, we anticipate we should be able to roll this application process out within the next couple of weeks and would anticipate being able to distribute funds in, somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three months by the time that the advertising is done, the applications are collected and scored, and all of that.
Do we, do we know what the, um, maximum individual awards are planned on being?
I don't recall if we set a limit on that yet or not. I can get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, and the last thing I have here is not any action that needs to be taken to.
Before we move on, I just wanted to know who will be aware of the, um, these, um, applications?
So we will, uh, do some typical advertising that normally the clerk handles through social media and our regular media outlets. Uh, I'm sure the planning department has a list of not-for-profit type human services organizations that they'll reach out to proactively to get the word out.
And I, I just want to respond to, um, the, um, constituent who spoke earlier. Um, you know, just making sure that, you know, that, that we do continue to. What we do always do is, um, reach out to all of our, um, not-for-profits. So, so I just, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, it's, it's not, that, that it's clear still that we, we have a process and, and it's, it's open for everybody.
We have a standardized process that we use for, for everything with the criteria is clearly stated in those things. And CEDA typically helps us or helps applicants through the process as well for those individuals or organizations that, that need a little help getting through that.
All right.
And the last thing I have, just as a reminder, uh, we've sent some information out to council related to, um, I, projects identified by staff that may be of interest to the council for, uh, the touring, New York State touring funding that we'll, uh, get. So our plan is to actually discuss that on the floor next week. So if you've got, uh, between now and next week, if you have questions or, um, suggestions, things that are not on that list, uh, if you could get back to me, then we can do a little bit of homework on those projects to make sure that they're eligible first and foremost and to get a little bit of a ballpark idea on the cost. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Reports from members of council, counselors? Counselor Genatino?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just a couple of events that I attended this week that I want to make note of and give some recognition. Um, Tuesday evening, I, I attended the Tim Durant Recovery Walk. Um, we were joined by Police Chief Slaton, Deputy Chief Anthony. That's an event, if you haven't been to it, I think most of us are aware of it, but it recognizes and shows support for the recovery community in Auburn and Cuba County. It also acknowledges the, um, the good work and the presence of drug court and, um, you know, how important that is to this, this community. On Sunday, um, I attended the forty-seventh Annual Community-Wide MLK Celebration, Martin Luther King Celebration. It was delayed due to COVID. It's usually in January. Counselor Kent was there. Police Chief Slaton was there. Mayor, I know you've been to this event countless times. It's always an enjoyable event. Um, I, I, I want to recognize the committee for continuing this for forty-seven straight years. One of the founding members of the committee, Bishop Murray, he's the last remaining founding member. He was in attendance. Um, it was pretty touching this year. Um, they included five young people from our community, and they asked them to come up and speak excerpts from speeches that, that Dr. King gave. And they did a fantastic job. Um, and I just want to recognize these as individuals. And I want to say their names because I want to give them recognition for what they did on Sunday. But also in light of what happened in Buffalo, I want them to know that they matter in this community. They matter to all of us. Um, J.C. and Robinson, Tyona Egghill, Devante Philbrook, Tyrone Pemberton, and Jay-Z Smith. Um, I'm proud of them. Um, this community should be proud of them. And I know their family members were too because they were snapping pictures like crazy. So I just, I wanted to bring up those two events. Thank you.
Counselor, maybe we could work with the city clerk and have those five individuals come to a council meeting one evening for a letter of thank you or a proclamation, something of that, so.
Sure.
I know Mister Mason was looking for something to do, so. Tight up for a while. Thank, thank you. I'm glad you brought the people to attend. All set, Counselor Genatino?
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
Anyone else? I, I do have one item, counselors. As we're all aware, uh, we, we've spoken about it a couple of times this evening. Uh, and Andre McNeil, uh, was tragically killed in, in an incident in Buffalo. As it turns out, not that I have a personal interest, but he's my neighbor. His yard runs into mine. He was a very nice gentleman. Talked to him many times, so. But, uh, talk with the clerk this afternoon. We get a few more details of what's going on in regards to a funeral calling hours or whatever. And we, as a city, plan to do something to recognize himself and his family. But we do not have enough details at this point. So if you have any ideas, counselors, please feel free to let myself and Mister Mason know. It will put that.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for volunteering, Mister Mason.
No problem.
All right. Uh, once again, the public hearing is still open in regards to the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three budget. Anyone desiring to speak in regards to that? Very well. Move along to Agreement Resolution Number Fifty of two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing amended agreement with Auburn Baseball Inc. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, second by Counselor Kent.
Agreement Resolution Number Fifty of two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, the Auburn City Council passed Agreement Resolution Thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-one, authorizing a rental agreement with Auburn Baseball Incorporated, which is a privately owned and operated business so that it could use Falcon Park for its collegiate woodbat baseball team with the Perfect Game League. And whereas the city agreed to rent Falcon Park to Auburn Baseball for a term of three years for the amounts of ten thousand dollars, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, and thirteen thousand dollars respectively, with the first payment due on June first, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas Auburn Baseball is now requesting an amended agreement, which is attached here too and incorporated herein. Whereas under the amended agreement, the term would change from three to eight years. from three to eight years whereby the agreement would terminate at the end of the eighth season in 2028 and the annual rents would increase accordingly. And whereas the proposed amended agreement will take effect immediately upon its execution and expire at the end of the 2028 baseball season. Now therefore be resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the amended agreement with Auburn Baseball Incorporated, which is attached here to and incorporated herein, which includes an eight-year term during which annual rent will be paid to the city for the use of Falcon Park as set forth therein. Be it further resolved, the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the agreement with Auburn Baseball and any and all documents necessary to carry out the resolution and the resolution will take effect immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Dugger, thanks, and add, I know you're very involved in this.
We have Mike Talbot from Public Works Department who works closely with the team owners and we have Don Lewis here, one of the co-owners of the team. Don, do you care to come up to one of the podiums and give council maybe a brief update and an idea of what you've got in mind?
Definitely, thank you guys, thank you council, thank you, Mr. Mason, Mayor Quill, Jeff Dugger, thank you guys for the opportunity. We had a great first year, I think we signed in March last year, so we got a little late start last year. Had a great season, our attendance from some of the numbers we found was up last year. This year, moving forward now that we had a full year, our season tickets are up by 23% from last year. We're now on a waiting list for outfield signs from the community sponsors. We will now, last year, I think our attendance still could have been better, I'll take that upon myself with such a late start. We're now getting involved in schools, getting out to the Little Leagues to get them out onto the field as baseball buddies and I can't thank you guys enough, the support that the city gives us, Mike gives us, your staff, Brian Rhodes and everybody over at the ballpark is, is first top-notch. We've never had, I've been with many teams in many cities and never had the support that you guys offer to the double days, so we greatly appreciate it and look forward to many more successful years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Two questions. Counselor Genatino?
Thank you, I just want to say how pleased I am that we were able to form this partnership. Baseball was the last thing we wanted to lose in this community. We temporarily did, but this partnership has restored it. I think it's, and I've expressed this multiple times, I think this is the best possible scenario. It alleviates being the city manager's primary job, managing the baseball team, because for a while I think it was. And I just want to recognize Mr. Lewis and his partner for the good work that they did. I was down there a couple of times last year. I also want to recognize Mr. Talbot and his staff, not only are they supporting this team now, but for years they were the ones that, you know, made it work. So I just think this is great all the way around.
Anyone else? It has been a great asset for the city and it's kind of, personally, you go back to the ballpark and kind of relive my youth, trying to sneak into the, into the game well and paying for a ticket so you can buy a soda or popcorn or something, but apparently they didn't catch up with me because my criminal record has been erased, but it's been, it's been great to have baseball in Auburn and everyone there. It's almost like walk, in my mind, it's almost like walking to a church, you walk into the ballpark and this family always sits in this section and it's almost out of place if they're not there, what's wrong? Why aren't they sitting there? So thank you for keeping that up at Auburn, we appreciate it. Clerk, with no further discussion, would you call a roll in regards to Resolution Number 50?
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry?
Thank you. Agreement Resolution Number 51 of 2022, authorizing a change order to CDM Smith for the Combined Sewer Overflow Project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Genatino?
Agreement Resolution 51, whereas on December 3rd, 2020, the Auburn City Council authorized Award Resolution 116 of 2020, which awarded CDM Smith for professional services related to design plans, design-related construction, administration, and inspection services for the Combined Sewer Overflow Project in the amount of $599,337, whereas the original contract with CDM Smith was intended to provide initial engineering services for up to 75% for design of the Combined Sewer Overflow Facilities and sewer separation plans associated with the project. Whereas the initial project scope has been completed and is necessary to complete all necessary design phases to bring the project to 100% design completion, whereas a change order to the original contract is necessary with CDM Smith in the amount of $564,703 to complete the design of the project. Now therefore be resolved that the council does hereby award a change order to CDM Smith for additional professional services related to the CSO facilities and sewer separation portion of the project in the amount of $564,703. Be it further resolved, the cost of the resolution in the amount of $564,703 shall be charged to the Combined Sewer Overflow Facility Study Capital Account Number HG8130440KE. Be it further resolved, the mayor or appointed designee is hereby authorized to execute any and all necessary agreements and reimbursement requests on behalf of the city for the project.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? No discussion, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry?
Award Resolution Number 52 of 2022, awarding a contract for the 2022 revolving loan sidewalk program. Do we have a sponsor? LaCastro, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Award Resolution 52, whereas the revolving load sidewalk program allows city property owners to request the city contractor install sidewalks and curbing on their property, which they are then able to finance over a five-year period as a special assessment charged on their city tax. Whereas the revolving loan fund account is replenished by previous participants' yearly installment payments. And whereas on Monday, May 9th, bids were open for this year's program and the following bids were received, one, Concrete Slipform Incorporated of Canistota, New York, $123,145, and two, Diamond Masonry of Port Byron, New York, $184,045. Whereas it is necessary, the Auburn City Council award the bid for the 2022 revolving loan sidewalk program to Concrete Slipform pursuant to their low bid of $123,145. Now therefore be it resolved, the council does hereby award the contract for the 2022 revolving loan sidewalk program to Concrete Slipform for their low bid, $123,145, and the cost of the resolution is to be charged to the revolving loan sidewalk account HA549744001. And be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents in reference to the award of the bid.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Very well, call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Kerry?
Before we get too far in, councilors, I just want to remind our audience that we still have our public hearing open in regards to our 2022-23 budget. Is there anyone desiring to speak? Very well, we will go back to Grant Resolution Number 53 of 2022, authorizing application for fiscal year 2021 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funding under DR-4625 and DR-4480. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor LaCastro.
Grant Resolution 53, whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency has made available fiscal year 2021 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is focused on long-term hazard mitigation measures that enhance the state's resiliency posture, avoid loss of life, and reduce damages to improve property. And whereas the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services has announced the availability of the FEMA HMGP funds under presidential declaration for national disaster DR-4625, also known as Tropical Storm Fred, as well as DR-4480 for COVID-19. And whereas the city of Auburn is located in Cuba County, one of nine counties eligible to apply for the DR-4625 grant opportunity that has a cost share of 90% federal and 10% local share with a total funding allocation of $4,392,094 for the nine counties. And whereas the New York State DHSCS has established funding priorities for the disaster event, which include targeting damaged areas and enhancing New York State's resiliency posture by promoting strategies and activities identified in the New York State Standard Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Department of Municipal Utilities will submit a funding application for the mitigation costs associated with the Burgess Street culvert for the Woodbrook Tributary, which would reduce risks associated with flooding within Auburn's potential environmental justice areas. And whereas the project will accomplish the following goals, one, have a direct risk reduction to vulnerable populations within the city; two, address climate change adaption and resiliency considering future impacts to improve property; and three, mitigate risks to critical infrastructure, which includes the city's bridge and culvert system. And whereas this priority project is identified in the newly adopted 2021 Cuba County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan with a current estimated total project cost of $1,450,000 and an eligible federal cost share of $1,305,000 and a local share of $145,000. And whereas in order to apply for funding under DR-4625 and DR-4480, city of Auburn needs to authorize the grant application and local funding match requirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the council that the mayor is authorized to submit an application to the fiscal year hazard mitigation grant program for construction costs associated with culvert mitigation project for Burgess Street over the Woodbrook Tributary. The city comptroller is authorized to submit the local match commitment letter to the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services for a total project cost of $1,450,000, anticipated federal cost share of $1,305,000, and $145,000 for the local cost. And if awarded, the fiscal year 2021 funds, the mayor is authorized to accept the grant funds and sign any and all agreements, documents, and reimbursements in association with the project. And if awarded funds, the city comptroller is authorized to set up any and all necessary capital project expense and revenue accounts under general fund and capital. And this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you. Mr. Dugger, thanks, and did you'd like to add or say?
Uh, no, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No.
Again, part of what we do every handful of years is renew the, our participation with the county hazard mitigation plan. That makes us eligible for these types of funding opportunities when they come up. There are a variety of different types of funding that rely on the hazard mitigation plan, and in this case, this is a direct result of damages and problems that we incurred here locally in the city of Auburn and Cuba County that make us eligible for this. So again, within that plan are a number of infrastructure projects, and this is just one of several.
Discussion by council? Counselor Genatino?
I don't, Mr. Dugger, I don't know if you're going to know the answer to this. In the resolution, it mentions flooding within Auburn's potential environmental justice areas. What constitutes an environmental justice area?
Are you able to answer that a little more specifically than I can?
So the DEC, they oversee the Environmental Justice District Mapping and another map that you guys are probably familiar with would be like our CDBG maps, which takes into account, you know, income levels throughout the city of Auburn. So the EJ district is similar, but it also takes in other factors like low, well, one, low income, and then two, potential risk to flooding or other disasters like that. So if you were to Google environmental justice districts, there's a statewide mapper and you can zoom right in on Auburn and a section of the city of Auburn is included in that. And they renew that map every so often and actually they, the most recent map that's under revision right now includes more of the city of Auburn than what was initially in it. It gives you additional points for grant applications if you do work within an EJ district because you're making, you know, necessary improvements in areas that, you know, maybe in the past people have put, put facilities that you wouldn't have put someplace else, right? It requires the city or anybody doing development within the EJ district to hold special public hearings similar to what we do with CDBG and involve the members within that community who may not in the past have been, you know, as vocal when certain projects are taking place in their backyard. So it's just an additional process and a boundary within the city of Auburn. There's other areas within Cuba County as well that are, that are within that map, too.
Thank you. Based on your very detailed and comprehensive explanation of what constitutes an environmental justice area, it's, I guess it's safe to say that this council and the city staff does pay attention to our underserved populations in this city, just maybe not in the ways that people think we should. So I just wanted to go on record, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Grant Resolution Number 54 of 2022, authorizing application for fiscal year 2021 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funding under DR-4480. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Grant Resolution 54, 2022, whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency has made available fiscal year 2021 Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Funds, which is focused on long-term hazard mitigation measures that enhance the state's resiliency posture, avoid loss of life, and reduce damages to improve property. Whereas the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services has announced the availability of the FEMA funds under presidential declaration for national disaster DR-4480, which is COVID-19. Whereas city of Auburn is a unit of local government and is eligible, is an eligible sub-applicant for this grant opportunity that has a cost share of 90% federal and 10% local share with no current federal funding cap associated with DR-4480 programs. Whereas New York State DHSCS has established funding priorities for this disaster event, which include targeting disadvantaged communities and socially vulnerable areas and to enhance resiliency postures by promoting strategies and activities identified in the New York State Standard Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the Department of Municipal Utilities will submit a funding application for the construction costs associated with the Combined Sewer Overflow Project, which prioritizes sewer separation within Auburn's potential environmental justice areas to address the storm water contribution to the city's sanitary sewer system. Whereas the project will accomplish the following goals, one, direct risk reduction to vulnerable communities and populations within the city; two, address climate change adaption and resiliency considering future impacts to the city's sewer system; and three, mitigate risk to critical infrastructure, which includes the Combined Sewer Overflow Facilities and headworks at the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas this priority project is identified in the newly adopted 2021 Cuba County Multi-Jurisdictional All-Hazard Mitigation Plan with a current estimated total project cost of $12.3 million and an eligible federal cost share of $11,070,000 with local share of $1,230,000. Whereas in order to apply, the city of Auburn needs to authorize the grant application and local funding match requirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the council that the mayor is authorized to submit an application to the is authorized to submit an application to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for construction costs associated with the sewer separation for the combined sewer overflow project. The city comptroller is authorized to submit the local match commitment letter for a total project cost of twelve point three million with an anticipated federal cost share of eleven million seventy thousand dollars and one point two-three million dollars for the local cost share. If awarded fiscal year two thousand twenty-one funds, the mayor is authorized to accept the grant funds and sign any and all agreements, documents and reimbursements. If awarded, the comptroller is authorized to set up any and all necessary capital project expense and revenue accounts under the sewer fund and capital funds. And this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Mr. Dugger, should I ask you first anything you wanted to add to?
No, just another, another project under hazard mitigation, but works well along with some of the ongoing engineering studies that have been done to gradually continue to separate our storm sewer from sanitary sewer, which is an ongoing problem.
It should have been done probably seventy-five, hundred years. We're getting there, so. No discussion, councilors? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Grant Acceptance Resolution Number Fifty-five of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing grant funding from the US, excuse me, US Tennis Association for Summer Tennis Programming. We have a sponsor, Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Whereas the City of Auburn owns and operates several city parks, which provide quality recreational opportunities to persons of all ages. Whereas several of our city parks include tennis courts for youth and adult recreation. Whereas the Auburn community has a long tradition with the sport of tennis being offered in our city parks. And whereas the United States Tennis Association offered a grant program to promote the sport of tennis named Growing Tennis Together. And the City of Auburn submitted an application for this grant to support summer tennis in our community. And whereas on April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, the city was notified that had been awarded the Growing Tennis Together Grant in the amount of one thousand seven hundred sixty dollars from the USTA Eastern Regional Council. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Auburn on behalf of the City of Auburn is hereby authorized and directed to accept these grant funds in an amount not to exceed one thousand seven hundred sixty dollars for summer tennis programming in our city parks. Be it further resolved, the comptroller is authorized to accept these funds into the Gifts and Donations Account, eight-nine-nine-point-two-seven-zero-five, to be used for summer tennis programming in our city parks.
Discussion, Counselor Kent? Cuddy, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier we saw the proclamation for Tennis Month and I just want to thank Mr. Talbot for working with me and with the organizations that have been involved, particularly Champions for Life, Finger Lakes Tennis, Auburn Community Tennis, which Claire Minno was here on behalf of. And it just kind of shows the partnerships between the city and non-for-profits to provide programming for for our youth and even adult lessons. So I, I just want to say that this money is earmarked for, for teaching, for lessons, specifically for an August tennis program that is for, going to be for young people. That information is forthcoming, but it is August eighth through the twelfth and details to follow. And I'll be, we'll be working with Mr. Talbot to, to, you know, get the sign up and where people can get information. But this, the good thing about this is that it, it, it offers these lessons for free to youth in our, in our city. So, so I look forward to accepting this and I think the US Tennis Association Eastern Region is impressed with, you know, Auburn's commitment to tennis. And I hope this grows and continues to grow programming for tennis and other sports in the, in the city. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy referring to Counselor Genatino's earlier comments, this is another item that's open to the entire community. So, good job.
Thank you.
Land Sale Resolution Number Fifty-six of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing land sale for two-nine-six State Street. We have a sponsor. Counselor Castro, seconded by Counselor Genatino.
Land Sale Resolution Fifty-six, whereas on November fifth, two thousand, City of Auburn acquired title to one point five acres of commercial real property located at two-nine-six State Street through a tax foreclosure. And whereas an individual owning property adjacent to the city's property, Mr. Thomas Wheeler, has proposed a purchase offer and sale contract attached here to and incorporated herein, which offers to purchase the property from the city for five thousand dollars. And whereas the city has notified all the remaining property owners adjacent to the property of the transaction and has received no responses. And whereas Corporation Council now recommends that the Auburn City Council approve the contract proposed by Mr. Wheeler on the following conditions. One, the city provide only a quick claim deed to the buyer at closing and two, the buyer pay for all title and closing costs. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Auburn does hereby approve the purchase offer and sale contract attached there to and incorporated herein for the sale of real property located at two-nine-six State Street to Thomas H. Wheeler for the price of five thousand dollars, subject to the following conditions. One, the city provides only a quick claim deed to the buyer at closing and two, the buyer be responsible for payment of all title and closing costs. Be it further resolved, the mayor is authorized to sign any and all documents in order to finalize the closing of this real estate transaction.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Corporation Council, I believe this requires of four votes?
That's correct, Mayor.
Is it land transfer? Very good, thank you. No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Financial Resolution Number Fifty-seven of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing various budget transfers. We have a sponsor, Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Castro.
Financial Resolution Fifty-seven, whereas the City of Auburn staff is requesting various operating and non-operating budget transfers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, as outlined in Attachment A, whereas there is no fund balance being requested for the transfers. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the transfers in Attachment A and two, the resolution will take effect immediately.
Thank you.
Staff is pretty lucky. Years ago, they would go through this line by line and why it was justified or not necessary and I, I still have nightmares over it, trust me. No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Council Resolution Number Fifty-eight of two thousand twenty-two, authorizing the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment pursuant to the two thousand twenty-two City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. We have a sponsor, Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Castro.
Council Resolution Fifty-eight, whereas on January sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the City Council passed Council Resolution Four of two thousand twenty-two, which adopted the City Auburn, City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. Whereas the procurement policy requires that the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment with an estimated value of one thousand dollars or more be approved by council. And whereas a list of city-owned surplus vehicles, equipment and other items which have outlived their useful life or are no longer necessary or useful to the city are attached here to in Exhibit A. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city to dispose of the equipment and vehicles set forth in Exhibit A through an auction in order to obtain the best value for them. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Auburn hereby authorizes the sale of the city-owned vehicles and equipment set forth in Exhibit A attached here to in accordance with the two thousand twenty-two City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy.
Thank you. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Castro?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Counselor, before we move on, I'd like to, for the last call, anyone interested in discussing public hearing in regards to the budget, the upcoming budget? No one? We will close that public hearing.
Close that? No table items, no vendor presentation? Other business from the council, councilors? Counselor Genatino?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a few items. I'm wondering if we could get a update soon on reparking downtown? I've received some feedback from some business owners that are getting a little frustrated. I just, I want to know if we have the system in place, how that's working, if it's beneficial. One of the complaints I'm hearing is that employees are camping out on the street. And I'm telling, I see it firsthand. I know specific people that work down there and they are parking on the street all day long. I think we need to figure out how to, how to manage that. I don't know if we start by working with the bid to go business to business to business with a letter explaining that this is not going to be tolerated. I know for a fact, I'm not going to say who it is or where they work, but I know they have a paid lot where they park, yet they're parking on the street. I can tell by the expression on your face that you've received the same feedback.
We actually had a meeting earlier this week related to all things parking, including the parking garage. That's certainly a hot topic. It's a matter of, a source of frustration for our parking enforcement officials who, you know, feel or recognize that there are individuals out there that are taking advantage of what may be a loophole in our ordinance, if you will. So that's something we've got, we need to look at as well. Tighten that up a little bit. We're looking at some different electronic platforms that they can track the vehicles a little bit better as well.
Okay, so you're on top of it.
We're working on it.
I, I do think that it would be beneficial if we can work with the bid and I'm on the bid board now and the bid goes door to door and this, this, once we have a process in place that we can enforce that this is not going to be tolerated.
Right.
That this is, this is hurting other businesses. And it's just, it's not fair. Another item that gets brought up to me often is, and I'm bringing it up now because we're getting ready to do work on the Lake Ave Bridge in the near future. A left turn arrow onto Lake Ave from Owosco. So if you're heading into the city, that gets backed up, especially during the school year.
There's a left turn lane.
Yeah, but there's no arrow.
Okay.
So you just sit there, sit there, sit there and it just gets backed up, especially during the school year.
I'm not sure exactly how that would work because I believe that's, that's state rule thirty-eight. So that may require the state to actually come in and decide whether or not that's acceptable or not. But we can, we can talk through that and see what needs to be done.
Another issue that I'd like us to start looking into a little bit in light of a recent fire down in the West End on Genesee Street, how we handle fire damage properties. It seems that, you know, when this happens, oftentimes these, these properties just get left and the owners aren't addressing the state of the property. And I don't know if there's anything additional we can do as a city organization legally to push their hand on that. But, you know, I know on Garrow Street, there were, there were three fire damage properties and they've all been addressed now. But it's significant cost to city taxpayers. So I'm just wondering if there's some way we can tighten up that process?
Yeah, a handful of years ago, there was some state legislation that was passed after many years and many municipalities dealing with the same thing. It gives us a little bit more authority. I can tell you on that particular property from approximately two weeks ago, we've been in contact with the owner since, since that day and continue to be in contact with that owner and their representatives on it. So we anticipate them doing the right thing.
Okay, good.
When it comes to that, it's just a matter of going through the insurance process.
You know, I just know, in my mind, real quick, you go to West Street, there's, there's a fire damage property that's been that way for five or six years. There's one on Cottage Street that's been that way for a decade. And at some point, I just, I don't know if there's any way we can push those property owners to either, you know, repair them or demolish them. And the last thing I want to talk about is our rules and regs for Owosco Lake. It has been some time since we sent those to the state of New York for approval. In fact, it's been five hundred and sixty-seven days since we voted on them in this, in this chamber. The process of the rules and regulations began on May fourth, two thousand seventeen, in this chamber, which was eighteen hundred and forty-one days ago. Yet we continue to sit here and wait. We've been given every excuse in the book from COVID to, you know, these things are complicated. I view the situation with Owosco Lake is a crisis that needs to be addressed. You know, there's, there's only so many things we can control, even though we're the purveyors of water for that water body. There's only so many things we can control. I mean, you look at the weather this month already. It's eighty-six degrees last Saturday. Torrential downpours this week. It's going to be ninety degrees again this Sunday and it's not even June. We can't control that. But what we can control is what goes on with that lake and what's going into that lake. You know, this, this was a comprehensive process. These rules haven't been seriously addressed since nineteen eighty-four. As, you know, it was comprehensive, it was local government, it was farmers, it was AOWA. Everybody was involved and it was, it was a public process that took two to three years. There were multiple public meetings. Everybody had a chance to give input. We voted on them, they passed overwhelmingly, yet the state continues to drag their feet. In my summation, this is my summation, the governor, the commissioner of health are negligent at this point in time because they're not even communicating back to us despite the fact that we reach out to them. The only person at the state level that has been responsive to us is John Mannion. And the only thing he can tell us is he continues to ask the Department of Health where these things stand and he's not even getting an answer. I don't know what the next step is. I do know that we can't continue to sit here and wait. We've sent letters, we've sent resolutions. Again, I feel they're being negligent. We now have a constitutional right in the state of New York to clean air and clean water and they are violating our constitutional right every minute that they sit on these rules and regs. So I don't know if that's the next step. I don't know if collectively we try to take legal action against the state of New York. But at some point, we, we have to push the envelope. And I'm not blaming anybody locally involved in the process because I think we all have. I'm open to suggestions of what the next step is. Counselor Kent, maybe eight-year next watershed council meeting that you can bring it up to them, that collective body so that we're acting in one voice. I, I don't want to be, you know, the Lone Ranger out there, the city council, you know. I think it would be helpful if we all got on board and collectively pushed to get these things passed.
I agree with you, Counselor Genatino. And Senator Mannion is scheduled to be our guest at our June twenty-first meeting. And I know that's going to be a hot topic in that conversation. He knows where, he's working on it and so maybe there will be some closure, air quotes, on what we can do next.
When is your next meeting?
Twenty-first? It's June twenty-first, ten o'clock, here in the chamber. So I'm looking forward to that and anything anybody can come up with, whether we do another letter, start making phone calls, postcards. letter, start making phone calls, postcards, pictures, children draw, put them in the mail, I mean, it sounds silly, but anything we can do to just remind them every day, nudge them that we're still waiting.
Do you, is our representative on the management council, do you think the next good first step is for maybe you to go back to that meeting on the 21st, express these concerns?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm agreeable to that.
I've made notes on everything.
Counselor, can I jump in here one second? Talked to our attorney and counsel, would it be worthwhile, do you think, a letter formally from the City Council, myself, City Council, to Senator Mannion, you know, wanting to know, just to give him a little ammunition when he goes to Albany, that he, you know, I'm sure he's doing his best, I don't doubt that, but just something in his pocket that we, we want this, and maybe everyone else, all the other associations, or individual, however it works out, to comply, have the same idea? I, I don't want to jump on your thunder, I just...
Mayor, I'm open to any suggestions.
You know, to incorporate some of what Senator Genatino just said in terms of data and stats, why don't I pull that together and just run it by you, because I think you've got it, and then we can actually formalize it into a letter and also just use it as part of our message to move forward.
I'm agreeable with that.
You're agreeable?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Anything else? Counselor LaCastro, by it, please.
This may sound kind of funny, but it probably isn't. The next time Mr. Schumer or anyone else comes to the area, if you want me, I'll stop up and say, "What's going on?" I mean, the letters probably never get to them, so when they come here to whatever, I'll step up to the plate.
Thank you for that, but it's probably a position that all of us should be there, and one of us start, and then the second one say, "I left you at this," and just, we probably won't see him again, but they will remember us.
Exactly, exactly. Or if he knows we're going to do that, he won't show up.
One time he'll show up, second time we never go, so. Counselor Cuddy?
Yes, I was contacted by Leroy Lubner. He was here about a month, month and a half ago, perhaps, about the, uh, the historical property on Osborne, the, uh, the area that was historically referred to as New Guinea. I know that it's, Chippewa is looking at that property before anything is done to it. I just wanted to let the council know that I have been reached out by him again, and he is hopeful that there, to whatever degree it is, there be some kind of commemoration of the historical significance of, of that area. So I just wanted to, to, um, to just bring, keep that in a hopper.
Very good.
But I know that the state is looking at that property now, and it's, and, and the DEC, actually, so there's actually two entities, so. But I wanted to let the rest of the council know.
Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, Mr. Diger, in the near future, could we get an update in regards to the parking garage? Seems like they've encountered some problems in the last week or two, and just, just an Public to be heard? Anyone desiring to be heard? Mr. Bush? I didn't expect to see you raise your hand, so he caught me off guard.
I was not expecting to speak. I must reach out to Mr. Scott. Dale Bush, 116 Standard Woods, Auburn. In his tirade on the operation enduring gratitude of this last weekend, saying that the city was congratulating or taking on over a white-only ceremony organization, however you want to put it. I'm not sure if there were any minorities on it, I don't think there were actually. However, I think it should be cleared up that to go on that trip, either a member of the committee knows that you meet the criteria, which is either World War II, Korean, or Vietnam veteran, and you're asked by them, or anyone can submit anyone's name that meets that criteria to go on that trip. Now, they are limited to two busloads, so I don't know if they had to turn people away, but I can only assume that either no minority's names were submitted, nor if they were, they didn't care to go. I, I have a Vietnam veteran friend that would not attend because of what he went through. So that being said, I'd also like to remind Mr. Scott that last November, he came up here during the public to be heard, and announced that right out here in this parking lot, on the Saturday before Veterans Day, he was going to hold a ceremony for minority veterans, and he was going to speak and have cake and everything. Well, as you know, I'm not a minority veteran, but I am a veteran, so I said, "Well, I'll attend and kind of stay in the back." Well, I did, and it was Mr. Scott and myself were the only two there. There were no other minority veterans. So when he starts all this about minorities, whites, blacks, I'm sorry, I think Mr. Scott is looking to create more turmoil than unity. So I only hope that his Friday event prior to Memorial Day out here on these steps attend more people than his out here in the parking lot did, because I'm not going to be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? So there's no executive session, city manager said he wants to go home, so. Do we have requests for executive session?
Yes, Mayor. We have two matters related to collective bargaining and two matters to update you on regarding pending litigation.
Very good. At this point, does anyone else have anything else to add to that possible agenda? Entertaining a motion for executive session. Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor LaCastro. Clerk, if you call the roll for executive session at 18:18?
6:18 PM. Counselor Kent.
Counsel.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. We're in recess for executive session.